Dean, let's start us.
Here. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, in thy name. And to the people, with liberty, without borders.
Thank you. A little call, start with my left Doug Smith.
Here.
Dean Renfro.
Here.
Kathy Burke.
Here.
Rick Doloski.
Here.
Jeff Beachy's here. My left, Town Marshal Steve Frame. Clerk Treasurer Kathy Antonelli.
Here.
Town Manager Mike Yoder.
Here.
And in the back, Fire Chief Nick Hans. Good evening, Nick. Okay, everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Any additions, corrections, or changes to the agenda? Okay, agenda will stand as published. So we will jump right into it. Mike? Let you kick us off.
Hey, so tonight our goal is to discuss the two properties right here. See on screen, the old Lauren Howard property and my stole property. Both sites now are cleaned, as you understand. I, so we have Scott, our legal advisor here to give us prevent. We sent some options and Jones is here to provide some wisdom. One update, I met with the county highway department this morning. Because if we look at future growth north of town, North Division Street Bridge is already a bit of a problem. If any additional growth that there race, a larger problem. So one option we looked at today is if we continue with pedestrian bridge here, then we can eliminate the sidewalk on the bridge. And possibly create a longer left-hand turn lane. But that's really kind of a pathway. It's not the best solution, so we are going to do some additional studies to attempt to predict the type of growth we'll have up there. Mostly it'd be residential, I guess. And see what the traffic impacts would be there, but they're suggesting that they, that we look at constructing another lane. A buddy, this on the east side, along with our pedestrian, but separate. So what that does, that means the stole property right here has, should be preserved for that lane in that bridge. So what we're looking at tonight is what do we do with the Howard property? And of course, the stole property next door is, is now about to be closed on by investors. So we have those, I think we have those two properties that we can be in thinking about. What we want to do.
I have a question. How long is this up here?
That's what I was gonna ask, same question.
Town.
All of this?
Sure, that's what, that's what INN says. So we're attempting to get the, it doesn't, it doesn't show that, right now it shows INN, who's that, on GIS.
Well, I know that they own this.
Oh, we own that.
Yeah, that's our little one there.
The ten feet here is the town's, that's clear. I have all kinds of documentation from INN, they claim that they gave that to the town at the same time they gave this ten feet.
So where's?
But it's not that way in the recorder's office. The last time we talked with INN, they said, well, I have a recorder through the wheel.
So geez.
I have a, so credible, they have an intern specializing in this. We have the record, the INN records clearly show that that is owned by the town.
So parking lot back there is ours, basically.
Yes, so I, I think once we get the ownership cleared up, it makes sense for us to do some line adjustments so that this line makes sense for the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, there's no sense for the town owning two feet of the river.
Right.
That's.
Yeah.
Or ten of the lavender patch building, old lavender patch.
Yeah, that doesn't make it.
So I've, there, these folks may close on the sale of this before we get this straightened out. But I assured them that we would straighten that down reality to make that.
Is that the buyer we think it is?
Yes.
So technically then, you're saying it would go from here up?
No, I think we're going to wanna just.
Here up?
Keep, we want to keep, I think, some easement right on through to our parking.
Okay, so that, that's the town parking.
This is the town's.
That's the red bird.
Yes.
Yeah, the one's the old dime store.
Well, yeah, but.
So we essentially, we own from here all the way to the river.
Now I have another question that I thought of before too. This is an alley, correct?
Yes.
And we, we should be maintaining that, correct? Because that's the town alley.
Do you remember, is the town owned that alley? Next, that's between the Opera House and.
Evans.
Well, click on it, wouldn't it tell you?
It's never been maintained in twenty-some years.
Yeah, we've got alleys in town that we've never maintained that belong to the town.
We've got other alleys that have never been vacated and goes right through the old Methodist church too. Never been vacated.
So it sort of shows that in downs.
Yeah, because it's connected to one-twenty.
Right.
See, and that's, that's what I was wondering about, and I, I thought about it years ago, but now that we're talking nearby. This alley, there's another one down further also, that is an alley between businesses. I think, maybe not, maybe not. I do remember that one. That we don't maintain, but the town owns it, and we should be maintaining him if the town owns.
That's really, really.
Tough to why?
Maintain.
Why?
Yeah, well, it's.
One thing is scenario, you barely get a truck down it.
Well, we still should be maintaining it.
Okay.
How, how do we maintain it?
Well, I mean, snow removal.
Never, never been touched.
I know, but we own it. And it's.
Snow removal for what?
This is a question, shouldn't we be owning?
Snow.
You would say we only are.
You can't drive down there? You can't drive through there?
It doesn't.
It would just be walking.
I'm gonna ask if there's an exit to that alley.
Yeah.
Say that again, Scott?
Doesn't look like there is.
Yeah, look, on, on the map I'm looking at, it looks like it's just a road that has no end. There's no active point on both ends. It has an access, it accesses off of one-twenty, but it dead ends at the back is what we're seeing. That's on the north.
So it should be more like a driveway for the property owners.
Yeah, I, I think they use it for what trash services back there.
Yeah. Because there is a road that goes out to.
So, so should we really own it?
But it's not ours. Part of Long Breaks will allow.
Yeah, good question. Did we own? All right, so any other questions?
Sorry, that's real.
Properties in question, so the, primarily we're focusing on this property right here, what the town would like to do with it.
Cool.
Tell you, there's been a lot of.
Question on the, on the bridge. How much of the stole property, I'll call it stole west? Would we require for the bridge expansion?
If we added a lane and the pedestrian path, it would be right at thirty feet, so we're right about in this area here. So if you save some room for a landing and outdoor something area, I mean, it pretty much takes up this property to be safe.
Yeah.
Now, that project is ten years away, but we don't wanna be making major investments here.
Are they, are they opposed to the change on the, adding the lane to the west side?
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Okay.
It doesn't work for a lot of reasons, because we not only take out this property, but we would have to take out this property to get our lanes aligned.
Yep.
So we'd be taking two buildings. Or this side, by adding a lane right here, we can merge that into this intersection.
Couldn't they make it wide enough to eliminate the cost of a pedestrian bridge and just put a sidewalk right on the bridge itself?
Yes, that was the plan.
Well, and not only that, but this corner here is really rough. You know, we've got damage to the corner because of trucks and everything else going over that.
So, did you figure the pedestrian would be, pedestrian part would be on the bridge or a separate?
If you're on.
It'd be on the bridge.
Physical separation.
Okay.
And it'd be ten feet wide.
Okay.
Versus this six foot.
Okay.
So instead of doing, instead of doing a barrier.
Bridge and then separate pedestrian over here, it would be all one. Okay.
And twelve-foot, twelve-foot travel lane and ten-foot pedestrian, but so you've got twenty-two, twenty-five feet. Just add some extra feet for.
And the county's gonna do this all on their bill, right?
It'll be a federally, it'll be a federal project, that's why we're looking at.
Of the county.
What happened to Camden Park then?
What come?
Uh, well, regardless, we were going to lose part of that park with our pedestrians.
For sake of, we'd have to, we'd have to lose the top of the stairs if they're out.
So that would be much different, isn't it? By the time you figure the setbacks from the bridge and right, the sidewalk that's existing, it's probably similar space. Very, that would be my guess, it'd be very similar.
And it's gonna be merging too. I mean, it's gonna, I'm sure they'll put it on, an angle to merge into the two-lane road. Instead of the turn lane is basically all you're thinking about is expanding that, correct?
Uh, they just need another travel lane, so I assume that.
Be a northbound travel lane, if it's on the east side, it'd be a northbound travel.
Northbound travel lane, yep.
Well, not necessarily, it could be a south, southbound turn lane.
Not on the east side of the bridge.
East side of the bridge.
Not on the east side.
Well, not the eastern most, but the middle lane.
So the primary, the primary problem with traffic right now is southbound, you, there's just no room to stack here.
Yeah.
In fact, we were looking at a Google map at the office and they got on a street view, it was already, when that image was taken, it was stacked to max.
Yeah, okay. So basically, the stole property on the west side, we need to just not consider that for any of our.
I believe that, yes.
Okay.
Be the safest.
Wouldn't even have to worry about a, a walking.
Well, what we can do there is, is create something that's low-cost, seen in areas, something that's easily, you know, we might wanna pay part of it or.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Something make it nice.
Okay.
Christmas decorations.
Christmas decorations, maybe coming to that spot of this.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess we're ready for Scott to outline some of the options we have for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. So for both properties, the town has two options. One is either sell the property to a developer for economic development project. So that process would involve completing an RFP, based on what the town objectives are for the property. So if you wanted to see restaurant or some commercial space, we can outline that in RFP and see if any developers are interested in developing this parcel to the town's specifications. There are requirements under the statutes for obtaining appraisals, determining what that appraised value is. And then using that value to create the value in the RFP for what a developer would pay for the property. There are some options where you could sell it for lower than the value, depending on if RBC owns it or if the town owns it. Last time I checked, it looked like one of these parcels was owned by the town and the other one was by the RBC. But I, it's my understanding that they were both gonna be purchased by the RBC, so that's just, we need to clean up or clarify on the records. So if it is owned by the RBC, there's more avenues for negotiating with developers to incentivize an economic development project. The second option is to lease the property. And so again, we would go through a process of an RFP, find what the value, the lease value is, the fair market value of the property to lease would be. And then submit an RFP, again outlining what the town objectives are for the property. And then receive bids and negotiate with those bidders to select the developer that's the highest investment bidder to obtain, satisfy the town's objectives. So the town will look at several factors, including, you know, what project is going to carry out the redevelopment plan for this area for the redevelopment commission? And as part of both processes, so we went with the, the sale option, the town could add restricted covenants and a right of first refusal to repurchase the property if, if whoever's owning and operating whatever's developed on the property stops using it. You can also add those restrictive covenants to say what limited uses you want on the property. And other things to help protect the, the towns anticipated, you know, what they are anticipating this property to be used for long-term. Under the lease structure, the town can continue to own the property, so you guys will be the landlords and be able to include in your lease restrictions. And set the term of the lease for how long you want someone to, you know, use the property. It gets a little trickier in the lease structure when the town's not involved with the development of the improvements on a property. So that is something we would need to think through and consider, what is the long-term goal for this property, what we wanna see here? If it is commercial or, you know, mixed use or something like that. If the town is gonna develop it, then we have to think about how that's gonna be financed, whether it's gonna be through bonds or cash on hand. And again, another thing we have to think about is including it in the fiscal plan for the RBC. If the RBC is the owner of the property, to make sure that this is part of its annual plan for using tip revenues. So those are just some thoughts initially about the two options. Happy to answer any questions and further the conversation on the town objectives.
So Scott, if we look at, if we look at option two, the lease. We could, we could retain ownership of the property. And we would be the landlords and the developer could come in and build a building for mixed use, whether it's a restaurant and/or shops. And then you said we would have, we could have, write it in there that we could have first right of refusal. If they decided to sell the building or sell the business, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, so you would still own the land and then there, there would just be a lease structure for the land. And then if the developer constructs the improvements, there would obviously be some consideration on how they're financing those improvements. You may have to do some collateral assignments to the lender of the lease, allowing them to step in as the left seat of the property. If the developer defaulted, and so they could come in and try to find a new tenant to take over that operation. So that, you know, the lender continues to receive its loan payments on the property. So it does get more complicated under the lease structure, but this would also allow you, the town to structure the deal with the most favorable terms and have long-term ownership of the property. And so if you went with a sale right, you would lose ownership of the property. But you could include restrictive covenants in the deed to the property and then a right of first refusal to repurchase it if it was ever sold.
Okay, what if, what if we looked at it at, as not just a lease of the property? But let's say the town builds the building and then we entered, enter into a long-term lease with tenants for the building.
Yeah, that's certainly an option. Again, we would just need to determine what the financing mechanism, mechanism is for the town to construct those improvements. Whether it's gonna be bond financing, such as lease rental revenue bonds we could use. But again, there has to be finding the money to actually disrupt the improvements.
Right, okay.
It's, it seems more, I hate to use the word squarely. If we own the property and somebody else builds a building and then they default on the lease.
Yeah.
And they can't find anybody to put in the building, what happens to the building? Because it doesn't belong to us.
Right.
Yeah, the, the, depending on just finance, the improvements, you know, that's the outcome. So if it's a traditional lender, like a bank financing improvement, they would be able to foreclose on the improvements. And then try to assign that lease to a new owner. Again, our lease would have restrictions on the use. So the town can say, no tattoo parlors or certain businesses can operate in here. So whoever the lender assigned the lease to would have to follow those restrictions. But it's certainly an option, assuming a lender would be willing to finance the private party's development of those improvements.
Thoughts on council and what you're envisioning there? As far as number one, a building? Number two, the type of businesses we want? And number three, RFP to sell, lease it, lease the land and let them build it? Or do we build a building and lease the land and the building?
Personally, I'm, I like sale, just because it's investment in the community. Like whoever's gonna build there is gonna be, they're invested. Or if it's a lease, five, ten years they walk out, we hope we can find someone to fill it. That's my concern.
Yeah.
I have a question for Scott. Under the lease option, is, is the real estate then tax exempt? Because it's owned by the town?
Yeah, that's a great question. So ultimately, under any and as property tax law, it depends on the ownership, occupancy and use of the property. So we have to look at, we know the town would own it, so it's exempt there. But then you have to look at the use and occupancy. So if we have a for-profit tenant leasing the space and operating a restaurant, then it would not be tax exempt. If you have, you know, the YCA or nonprofit charitable organization in there, then we have the town and an exempt entity satisfying all three requirements. So it would be exempt. So it ultimately depends on who the tenant is of the property.
Have we had any inquiries, Mike, from people who are interested in, in the property at all?
Probably four serious.
Restaurant related or?
Some, some I don't know, they just are interested in putting together a proposal. Scott, if we did a situation where the town retaining ownership and bill, you call that a lease bond or something like that? Well, we could.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I was just wondering about the process, how do we choose the tenant? We probably would choose the tenants ahead of time, agree on a lease amount, and that's what feeds into the bond? Is that how that works or should I get something backwards?
Yeah, that's correct, so the, the bond debt service payments will be payable from the lease rentals. And the lease rental payments can only start after the building is constructed, so there would have to be a capitalized interest for a period of the construction of the building. Or you could lease other town assets to start paying the debt service on bonds. And you know, you have to hire someone to do an appraisal to figure out what the fair market lease rate is for the other assets. And then use that or again, just wait until the improvement, this new improvement is constructed and then determine what that value is at that time and use that to factor in the lease payments.
I understand that Mitchell Walker has used this process, because the town would be losing tax revenue. Does this structure allow the town to make, to realize some profit over and above the lease payments? So they're at least getting something to replace the tax law, property tax law?
Wait, what? They're gonna tax the building, correct?
Yeah, so the, the building would likely be taxed and you would receive rentals there. You could certainly add a condition that there's a participation fee for the lease of the property. So as, as I'm sure you know, some of the big tenants at malls have leases that they pay a percentage of their profit to the landlord. So if you wanted to do something like that, you could say, you know, add a lease agreement, something to, you know, for developer, user of that property being able to make those payments and agreeing to those terms.
The only thing I see is, is if we would build a building on that property and lease it out. We would have to make sure that whatever we built would be useful to anybody that wanted to use it. In other words, if we tried to make a building that was like a restaurant and somebody wants it for offices. Then we've got, we've got, we've got an issue, because you can't just take a square box and put it there and say, this is what it is. You know, it might make it clear.
Well, that, that makes sense, so I think we all need to decide what do we want there. I mean, we've talked about for, for as long as I can remember, having a restaurant there, which would be ideal. But I think if we go that route, I would envision if, if, if the town builds a building and we own it and we lease it out. We try and find the tenant before we build the building. And then we use their input on what the building should look like, how it's laid out for a restaurant.
Need that things.
Yeah, yeah, what they would need for infrastructure, if you will. And then, you know, partner with them to design the building around their needs. Now, and then Scott can tell, Scott can answer this question. Could we, could we stipulate a long-term lease to say, you're going to sign a lease for ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, whatever the case may be?
Yes, yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Lease just has to be recorded at the, sort of, period of time.
Okay, so then, you know, if we have a long-term lease, then we know we're gonna have that tenant operate a restaurant for that period of time. And if it, if something happens, let's say that the ten-year lease and the, and that ten years. The restaurant moves out and somebody else wants to move in, well, then it's just a renovation for whoever the next tenant is that comes in. And then the new tenant could, and Ken probably knows this better than anybody, there's tenant dollars for renovations or changes. If it, if they change it from a restaurant to a retail shop.
Yeah, and you're, you're going right kind of where, I think, from my experience you should go. But, and before you could make a decision on what you would support there. Really, you need to know what the property will allow or what the property can support. So, you know, developing a site or. So um, you know, developing a site or offering a site for specific land use like. Office or a restaurant, you've, you've gotta consider things that um. You know, the physical constraints of sight are concerned, in my opinion. Because so far it hasn't been, I mean, since it, it was, there was a commercial use there at one point in time. That didn't um require parking to be successful. Um, it was, you know, like a, I think the last use I remember, like a flea market, um. You know, and I think there was a.
There's a ice cream general store.
So it was more kind of a walk-in type of business where. You know, uh, rest, for a restaurant to be successful, the one thing that you, you need to consider, especially if you. Are gonna place it in this prime location is how you accommodate the parking, you know? And where does that happen and, and does it happen on the site or just happen off-site and that kind of thing? And then, you know, the constraints of the property itself, which you know, about happened at its hill.
Yeah.
You know, and uh, and so that's gonna kind of limit as to, you know, what you can develop and how you develop it. Um, and I think even before you get to the point where you make a decision on what land use. You're gonna add into the RFP. Uh, because you can certainly, like Scott said, you can certainly stipulate that, you know? Um, you can do it by restriction, I don't want any of these things, or we only want these three things, or whatever it might be. But the, the, the one thing, like just sitting here listening, I think first, one of the first things that has to happen is we gotta get a survey down. So we know exactly where the property lines are because of.
Uh, survey's been done for this property right here. So I just saw that today.
But just for that one?
Just for this one, but it does, it does affirm these property.
That's him.
Okay, so and, and you know, you couldn't. On that piece of property, like you were saying about the, the drop-off. Um, so you can't park behind there. Where those so-called trees are, you can't park in that, what Nipco supposedly sold us. And that has always bothered me because if a restaurant does go in there, where is the parking?
Right, well, let me show you. Well, first of all, I sent you a picture downtown Ocean. And no, there's very little parking in front of restaurants. Everybody's walking.
No.
But here you have some really interesting parking locations. So let's just say a restaurant goes here, you can build a walkway from this over to the public parking lot here. You can also probably do a deal with these folks that we use their parking lot after business hours and right there across.
At the bank?
Right here, there's a crosswalk, so you've got parking here, you have parking there.
Plus Charles Street.
And you got one right down here at Charles.
Right, you got that, you got that, great.
So there's actually quite a bit of parking right for any businesses right along this area. Especially the new improved intersection here with new and. Strongly encouraged commercial traffic that's going somewhere else.
Yeah.
In the next 10 years, yeah.
So Ken, to your point about the slope on the, on the site. You know, as I, as I think through this in my mind, um, maybe this isn't, maybe this is the right way to look at it. But as I think through it, in my mind, it's like a walkout basement for a hounds, right?
It could be, it could be something special, sure.
Yeah, so you could have it, so it's lower level dining. Um, this is, again, this is just my vision of what I would like to see is something that. You have access to the river and the river has access to the restaurant. Put piers down along, you can boat up, jet ski up, kayak up. Tie off, go in, have lunch, go back out.
Are you going into the restaurant business?
Nope.
I, we got a L S E right here.
Nope. I just want a good place to eat. Yeah.
If you're not successful with that offering, you go plan B.
Yeah.
You know, dream big.
Yeah.
You only get one chance.
I mean, as I, as I think through this and it, this kind of reaffirms even more what I was thinking this week and last week of. If we're gonna lose, if we're gonna lose the Soul West property to the bridge. Um, and we're only faced with building on this lot and maybe a little bit of that one. Um, you know, my first thought, what I thought of it was. Single-story building, rooftop dining. And maybe as you walk up, maybe three-quarters of the building to the left, to the, to the west side would be restaurant. And then the quarter to the east would be. An ice cream shop or maybe a little, or a bakery or, or a coffee shop or. Something else. Um, but as I, as I think through, if we're gonna lose the Soul West property to the bridge, maybe it's a two-story. Maybe it's a two-story building.
And I think we need to talk to the owner of the other soul property right here, that.
Yeah.
Ken, Ken, you folks have done an evaluation of that building. Think you can talk about that or not?
Yeah, I mean, it um, I don't mind sharing, we, we were, I actually considered buying that building myself. And how my, the architects and the structural engineers kind of waved me off. They said that. The roof is uh, is in rough shape, um, got a few waves in it. It's telling us there's something going on up there. And the floor's got one of those marble ruined doors, so. Um, it would, it would require some serious work and uh to, and it basically, they came back and said you'd be better off just to tear it down and start with it. So.
So I, I know this new owner's buying it for investment reasons, my strong guess. So I wonder if there's a public-private relationship here where we develop both of these properties with some. Use that makes.
Did you give any public response from the flyers you sent out?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
What was the?
Most of them were like the idea of restaurant. Yeah.
Yeah.
Be nice if you could put access off of the river to a restaurant too.
Yeah, that's exactly what we need.
Absolutely.
Because. On this stretch of the river. Even, even jaywalkers.
Or jaywalkers.
There, you could, you can, and we've done it.
Yeah.
We've ridden jet skis up there, but there's no place to tie off.
No.
You have, you have to find a place to tap. Between dam to dam, Motville Johnson Street, there is nothing.
You know.
Absolutely nothing. We have a prime opportunity to have something on the river that's something that nobody else has.
So, so yeah, that you can do just about um. Anything in the uh RFP relative to what your design standard might look like. Like it has to fit into the, you know, historic architecture of the Stula Street, that type of thing. You can, you can uh, you know, like I, like I said, dream big. I mean, you know, like you might get this one chance to do it and so, and again, you can. If you're not successful, the first offering, you turn around and say, okay, what did we do wrong and offer it again?
Yeah.
You know, it wouldn't be unusual for, for that to happen. But I guess is there's probably gonna be enough interest where you're gonna get a couple of good proposals.
Yeah.
And uh, and you can, you can ask for as much detail as you feel comfortable with if you want. Um, we've helped uh developers answer RFPs where we actually did a design concept. Rendering of a facade, you know, provided enough detail about the design of the building. And the amenities that were gonna be uh built along with it to be able to really qualify. And, you know, normally the RFP comes with a uh, a scoring tool. And uh, and it can be, you know, quality of development, level of investment, you know, business type. All of those kind of things and, and, and like if you want access, if you want this development to include an access to the river and put that in the RFP.
Yeah.
If you're gonna build here, we're expecting that, you know?
Yeah.
So um, and, you know, and then um with, with uh Scott's help. You know, you structure that so it meets the letter of the law and my guess is uh. You know, you, of course, have to approve some type of resolution to issue that RFP. And then give them some time to respond and then set up review committee of the council and review those. Try to, try to, you know, um, you're, you, there will be some, a little bit of wiggle room in, in, in your review. But uh, there will be certain things that you won't be able to live without, certain things, maybe someone's proposal just blows everybody else away by the design. And the building that they offer.
Yeah.
You know, so that would be, that would be a typical, you're gonna put, put people that know how to do this into competition. And that's the goal, you know, so. But we could work with, with you and Scott and uh come up with. You know, I, I would definitely maybe get a committee of the council or a co- or committee of the whole to go through. Saying this is what we all agree to, this is what we wanna see and definitely doable.
So you've got my, my wheels turning now, Ken, so we, you know, I, I had thought about. If the town designs the building and builds it and owns it and leases it. Um, it almost sounds like there is a third option where we could do the RFP and we ask for the proposals. And then the town says, okay, we're gonna pick proposal A and we're gonna build it and we're gonna own it. And we're gonna lease it to you or whoever, you know, if, if, if the person that designs option A. If we go with that option, then they have the, they have the option to. Put, put a restaurant in there of their own.
Right. Yeah.
As opposed to the town designing the building, which we're not really in the business of. Um, I mean, we don't know how to design a restaurant, at least I don't, I'm sure if you guys do or not, but. Um, we do the RFP, we still do the RFP, but we. We build a building, we own the building and we lease the building. Okay. I like that idea too.
With this sort of, sort of project, I had not paid that much attention to ready grants because we didn't have a private site match. But I'm almost hearing that a project like this might be a ready grant. The town and private participation.
Um, it could be, um, it probably wouldn't fit the uh. The current scoring parameters of ready, but you never know what next year might bring, if they're gonna be in another.
I thought there was some parameters about downtown private renovation. Um, and there was it all education.
Well, I think at this point in time, I think the application period's kind of gone.
Hmm, but Jill's second had known.
Oh, no.
Yes, that is true, but what I'm hearing is that there's lots of good ideas and not enough good ideas they got with it.
Oh, really?
So ready's.
It is.
Okay, well.
It, it's complicated, but it's valuable, I mean.
Yeah, if, if there would be an option, I might have just asked the question.
Yeah.
We might project, that can bring. Well, maybe despite it won't be large.
Yeah, well, you know, and it, and it could be just the timing might be a little bit off because it, um, you know, they're. They're gonna be pushing to obligate those funds. Hard.
I don't think they've spent all the initial. Right.
Uh, well, they just started um here in the north central. They've just started, uh, they just did interviews and presentations on Friday of last week. So those were all projects they had. Uh, you know, they've got forty-five million dollars in that pool. Um, and they had a, you know, a hundred and fifty million worth of about uh applications.
Okay.
So, but.
Not keen on going there, so I don't like the process.
Yeah, it's uh. I don't know, feels kind of a little bit more subjective than you think it should be, you know? It's not as clean as you think it should be, a- anyway, that's been my experience, but. But there are some good projects that, that were submitted and some good projects that were presented. My guess is that it'll.
Yep.
Well, question with the guy, you said somebody's looking at the other store down in the old. Um, barber shop and stuff. Would there be any chance that guy would be interested or person or persons be interested in developing the whole thing? If there's structural issues and the building needs to be tore down, that would add you more ground to build a bigger restaurant.
You could, you could add a score right here for, if you want to join any property with five more points.
When you get parking.
Yeah, it's really up to you.
I think we'll be calling this week.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I mean, you got what his intent is, now that I know the ready flows. So it's, it's like this close to being able to reveal who it is until it flows, I don't think we should. So yeah, that's an interesting opportunity with that new owner.
Yeah.
And.
But like, you know, cause.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you for a fact, if I would have loved that building, I would have, I would, I'd be not sitting up here, I'd be waiting for you to issue the RFP.
Yeah.
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 You know, I mean, that's, I seen when you said that was in the process and gain a lot, if there's no parking. You know, you could build on the power property and, and still have the parking in there or something.
What I said.
Well, I think you got a great site. Whatever you decide to do.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we do like Jeff, you suggested that someone comes in and has specifications for a building. And we build it and lease it, we would have to have a, you know, an ironclad agreement before it's built. That you are going to use this for you, oh, for the next. Let's say twenty years.
You know, there's another leg to that stool too is that, you know, you could do, um, you could have your fiscal advisor. Kind of do a, you know, line by line comparison, see out of the town, bring it out twenty years from now.
Yeah.
And, and uh, and you know, you know, from a. You, I guess you would always wanna do that analysis before you make a decision on how you're gonna structure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But um, and you know, there's, to me, um, either one would work. But I, I would definitely recommend that if, you know, as you're analyzing this, you know, you take those two pathways. Running next to each other and say which, which is the best for the town.
Do a parallel analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leasing versus selling, you mean?
Yeah, I, I think that's uh, that, that is something that they can tell you can certainly help with. They've, they've worked on these kind of projects for other communities multiple times, so.
Okay, so if we, let's put it this way, if we sell it, sell the property. We have no control over what goes in there other than. Or do we?
No, I think.
We have a covenant on it, yeah, I understand that part. But then if, how, how long's the covenant?
Right.
Is it lifetime?
Yeah, it would run with the land, it would be.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because if the covenant was, you know, a short period of time, then we, not a short, say forty years. Um, then who's to know what would go in there after forty years? It could be anything.
Well, yeah, and that's a, I mean, that's a valid concern, but I think, you know, it, it really, you know, with, with Scott's help writing the RFP.
Right.
And then the, ultimately the development contract that goes with that.
Right, right.
To the selected developer.
I mean, now if you had all the overlay that we're working on, you can create a downtown district, I would assume. Say these are the types of uses we want.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can, you can be, in, in that overlay, you can be selective by tax person to choose to.
Ooh, that's interesting.
Okay.
Lot to think about.
So I, what I'm hearing is maybe I need to get Baker Tilly involved. Let's do a whole different cost scenario.
Yeah.
Options to look at.
And we need to find out where about the deed from Nipco.
The what?
The deed from Nipco.
Craig DeBolle is running up all kinds of legal bills with me. Yeah, they're working.
They're in the process.
Uh, because actually, well, Ken mentioned this, but United who engineering, who designed the bridge. Was ready to create a new legal description that eliminated these, these guidelines. And then, then we ran into a problem that this realtor, when they. They are, when they're. Very high amongst the creed, they couldn't find deed that showed to anybody.
Well, that was the original of Rebecca Lodge, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That was the Rebecca Lodge, the brick building, yeah.
I am, that's quite a bit of documentation, so I sent that all over the attorneys and I sent it to title company and.
Always barber shop, reason.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that figured out. We need to. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that figured out, we need to get the deed dated, recorded.
Okay, so yeah, I'd say let's get Baker Tilly involved, start to do some cost analysis. And I, Greg, I agree with you that having ownership, if we sell it, then whoever buys it. They've got skin in the game, my concern would be losing control of the property.
Right, well, I mean, even if like the waterfront, I mean, the one aspect I don't like about selling it is the waterfront, but what if we retain the waterfront to do town-owned peers or something like that, if they stay maintained, it's people that have access to the town.
Yeah.
And then if we're in, if we do a walkway to the public parking.
Yeah.
It would kind of make sense anyways.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, let's go that, let's go down that path, Mike.
We will do.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take it up.
Thanks, Ken, appreciate the input.
Next on the agenda, uh, we might wanna flip over to your.
Okay.
If you can show the procedures for zoning matters. I guess I was the one that talked about this after the last zoning hearings, how that went. Is that maybe we needed to adopt a set of procedures of, to handle zoning, rezoning. And so I worked with Craig Devol, George actually helped. Maybe Scott helped with this, in fact, I think Scott and Alex were arguing with George, but anyways. Uh, here's what we're recommending, and this aligns us with how the other towns and other cities are handling some. So it intends for it to be done, if you go further to the bottom, this, the top part is just a rational way of working through and handling the the public hearing, but at the conclusion, your options are a simple motion. That is made and seconded, that you will approve it. Or you will deny it, or you, or you will table, or you modify. So if you table it, then you move to another hearing, you can choose. But the, the idea is to handle it in one hearing, that includes making amendments to the, uh, our commitments as well during that first. So I'm sug- I'm suggesting that, that the council adopt this, then, then you have these standards in place. Everybody knows what the rules are, everybody knows what to expect. And I think maybe, maybe, I don't know, we can maybe avoid some of the issues we had.
It's be for the county to look at, too, so they don't come in and say, well, the county approved.
No, this is just. For us to handle a rezoning here, when it comes from the county, it comes to us. And here's the procedure, so here's the order that everything happens. Uh, everybody gets three consecutive minutes to make their comments. So first you speak in favor, then you speak, uh. Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of the position, anyone old, getting put in online, we're, we're going to delete that. We're not offering online opposition, I don't think, unless you want.
No.
We've been in presence, so those, I didn't see that before. So two and four should be. And then I would read any public comments that were submitted, uh, written comments that were submitted, so that would be read into the record. President closes the public hearing, uh, addition gives a chance to respond to all the comments that were made. Then you guys discuss and decide what you want.
Yeah.
Sounds good, man.
Yeah.
Looks good.
So if you wanna formally adopt that, we'll, uh, put those two changes.
Okay, so you're saying getting rid of number two and what?
Number two and number four.
With D four. The online.
Oh, okay, so you're talking Roman numeral four and two. I make a motion, I can make a motion now, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Scott, am I missing anything on this that you can sign in on?
Is he still there? Did you boot him?
No, I didn't. Well, I don't know, I can't see.
Well, I do know that during a work, work session that we were informed earlier, well, a long time ago by Alex. That we could make decisions at the work session.
Yeah. Right.
And in, in that favor, what is the name of this? I can't, don't.
The downed as practices, yeah.
I make a motion, we accept the procedure for zoning matters brought through the Bristol Town Council. And, uh, editing, editing, uh, number three, number three D. To delete number Roman numeral two and four.
Hey.
Does that sound right?
Perfect.
Hey, motion by Kathy.
I'll second.
Second by Doug, open for discussion. No further discussion, take a vote, Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yeah.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg Dolinski.
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey's yes. That'll make zoning changes a whole lot simpler.
Yes.
We may have some, uh, interesting ones coming up next. My next item, next I have two more, but Tim McCandless asked me to ask you folks how you would like to handle considering, uh, no longer fluorinating the town water. Adding fluoride to the town water. So many municipalities no longer doing that, as we look at renovating our systems, Tim would like to eliminate that if you are willing.
It looks like next year, you're not gonna have any choice. They can ban date it.
To eliminate?
Yeah. Kennedy wants to get rid of it.
Who does? Oh.
Well.
He's just a candidate.
You folks are happy with just eliminating, we'll just move in that direction.
I'm worried. There's fluoride in toothpaste.
Become a fluoride addict.
Right, is that Kenny Davis, we'll just, I'll tell Tim that, we'll proceed, and it'll save us some money. And as you'll learn through this, this project, a lot of projects, we already have a couple additions, so wherever we can save some money.
Yeah, well, I'll go through a formal motion on this.
Yes.
Is there a formal motion to eliminate fluoride, the addition of fluoride to our?
Make a motion to eliminate fluoride in our water system.
Okay, motion by Dean.
I'll second.
Second by Doug, open for discussion. Now for discussion, like vote, Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg Dolinski.
I don't understand, I don't know enough about it, too.
Okay, well, that would be a yes, so. Motion carries. That's, I, there's, and I was with you, Greg, but I've read up a little bit about it, and it's, yeah. It's, it's a good thing to eliminate it.
Yeah, last thing I have, uh, we have the community gardens water. So the community garden was over at Charles Street, we didn't charge them for water. When we moved them to the new location, we actually put a meter on it to measure the water. And now, some people wanna know if they should pay their water bill. So the park board, assuming since we got the water free over here, they get the water free over there, so.
What do you mean, though?
Pay for our water here.
We got a meter.
Okay.
I mean, that's so different, like the one that did fire department. They pay the water bill, don't you?
So.
See?
Okay, let's talk about this.
Do they pay for water at parks?
I don't think so.
What about Condon, is that meter, Condon and Hermatch, are they meter?
No, both well.
Yeah.
Condon's not a well, that's city water, those hydrants are all city water. All those hydrants in Condon Park are city water. That's what I mean, it's city water, it's just not meter. Yeah, there's no wells down there.
Yeah, so what's, what's purpose of the community garden?
In the community. They donate their food to the pantry.
And how much do we pay the people that work at the community garden?
We don't.
How much, how much, okay, rephrase that question, how, how much are people paid to work at the community garden?
Nothing.
They're not, um. Given the fact that it's volunteerism. It's designed, the garden is put out there to benefit the community. And provide food for the hub.
Why'd we put a meter in?
My opinion would be that we not charge in for the water.
Where'd we, why'd we put a meter?
Why did we put a meter?
We have to track the water for a water audit, we have to do every year. So that's why they put a meter in there.
We have to show we're not charging for more water than what we actually pump. That would be fraudulent activity.
Why aren't there meters on the other stuff then?
Bates May.
There, there is a meter at Memorial Park, there's not one.
Yeah.
So how much food, I remember, uh, when did it say, how much food do we put out versus cost of the water?
Uh, the water bill's actually for two seasons, right? How much is that, you recall?
I think it's a few thousand dollars for two seasons.
It's like a million thousand, yeah.
Would it be better to put that into a monetary donation for food?
Yeah.
Rather than the produce that's produced? I mean, because if it's a couple thousand dollars and it's only a couple hundred dollars in food that's being produced for the pantry.
Pound of.
I have a hundred and fifty in my head.
Hundred and fifty pounds of food?
This year, this year.
For a couple thousand dollars?
I was thinking it was more.
Yeah, that, that doesn't make much sense.
No, I mean, I like the idea of it, it's nice, people have something to do, but I mean, a lot more good if you don't, two thousand dollars to put towards whatever food they need than fresh produce that expires.
That's true.
Well, then not all goes to the pantry either.
No, it doesn't.
Anybody in Bristol can go there and get vegetables if they want.
Yeah.
Do they, I mean, but do, like, I just don't know what, how much, I personally don't know how much is used by the community, I don't.
Yeah, I don't either, but I know actually a lot of people, they're getting food.
Maybe it's probably.
If we have Michael Rock come to the next meeting.
I bet it's half and half.
I'm just curious, it seems like it's a big standard for ration.
I, yeah, I personally think it's half and half, half the food that's produced goes to the pantry and half of the goes to people in the community that go and just get it. I think it's half and half, but I can't tell you for sure, Chris would know, Chris Guyard would know how much he takes in.
Yeah.
Plus, you know, it's.
Way major, everything.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So I apologize, it was a thousand pounds of produce this year, I was close.
You're just one digit off, Jill.
Three, four digits.
Was that the amount that was donated or the amount that was grown? Okay.
We provided.
Okay.
It's about fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
Less water, because they're putting sulfur in those today. Whatever, I.
I don't know.
Thought we ought to, actually Kathy thought that we ought to decide whether this is a freebie or not.
Well, actually, it's nothing to do with the food pantry or the community garden, that's town's property.
It's a park, it's a park board, well, what, what's your point?
It's town property, we bought it.
Right.
Park board don't own it, town, town council, the town of Bristol owns that.
True.
And so that's our water, man.
Park board.
Kathy's using the ground, or not, okay.
Park board is using.
They decided they wanted to use it.
Bristol owns that town.
Yeah, the park board doesn't own.
That's true.
And the park.
It's our water.
The park board comes to us, because they're. We make the decision for them.
But I mean, technically, really, it's not the park boards, it's not a park.
Right.
The park took on the expenses to make the community garden, because there's no funds.
Right.
Yeah.
The park board volunteers do that without knowing it's gonna be a water bill.
Then the park board needs to reconsider what they're doing.
So, what are we doing with the three thousand dollar bill, I'm a little lost, so what?
I thought it was two thousand.
Yeah, it's the, it's just over three thousand.
From water? For the water?
Yeah.
Holy crap.
Well, I mean, technically it's on us, because if we didn't, if it's our, our spot, it's our bill, we get negotiated with the park board.
Right.
I mean, we really can't retroactively say you owe this money if.
No, we, we own the money, we owe.
Yeah, I mean, it's on us, so it has to be paid by us, right, to your, so I mean, right.
And the park, here's, here's the question, who authorized the park board to be able to have the garden there? We did, then it's our bill.
Yeah.
So I said, to me, it's our bill.
Their bill, good point, Dean.
Because, to me, that water bill is not for here, or for us, or the taxpayers. It's to help pay for what we're doing down there for the water and everything. You know, that's what that money goes for.
Right.
You know, pay those bonds back.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's our bill, I mean, uh. The only thing, we'll have to make sure that the park board doesn't just do it again, without coming to us.
Something like that, maybe.
But it's a lot of water.
Well, that's what there'd be rates to.
Sandy soil. Um, okay, I'll say something about next year, we'll think about this before we get into the season, so we'll have a plan. Wouldn't feel too bad about not paying into their fund, because we are paying significant dollar for water, meaning that should be coming out of the water, but it's coming out of the nature edit, edit, so. So there's, we're all, we're, we're all working together.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I'm working at, trying to keep that money going to where it needs to go, because we got, we got obligated, yeah.
All right, but that being said, we didn't budget for that bill. And I would need permission to. Appropriation, so that we can cover that before the end of the year.
So which budgets are coming out of park board, half of ours and half of the park board? Or not?
It's all our money.
Well, I understand that, but the budgets are separate, that's the thing.
Where would, where would it come out of, Kathy, general?
Well, we could. All right, if you want to transfer some money, we could pull it out of edit or something. And it's pretty.
Oh, we figure out, we'll try and figure out before Thursday where it could come from.
We'll figure out.
And then we'll do an appropriate, well, the appropriation on Thursday.
Well, get to.
Okay.
And I am finally at the end of my list, and what's our other questions?
Anybody have questions for Michael?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I, um, you're gonna cross the drain.
Yes.
When they're gonna, they let that out for bids or?
It's out for bids now. We'll be opening those first meeting in December.
Yeah.
And that's for what, Elm and Twin River Trails?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
All of Elm or just from St. Joe or Elkhart to Michigan?
I think it's Elkhart to Michigan. Uh, we have marked the trees up on Twin River Trails, so that the residents can see the trees cutting down, and so we're reaching out to the community leadership up there, so that she can.
I got you, didn't I?
That's some good footwork there, Michael.
Anyway, so far, nobody's said anything, but I think there's a lot of smaller, there is some junk up there. It'll be, it'll be nicer once we clean all the trees out.
Twin Rivers, they're doing the whole thing, way back into the cul-de-sac and everything.
I think so, oh.
But it was a bad spot when he turns, yeah. Something real bad.
So you know, you do those things like.
Okay, anything else you like? Okay, Kathy and everything?
I don't have anything specific.
Okay, and do we lose Scott?
I don't, I don't know, go back to the other screen and see.
There he is.
Scott, are you still there?
I'm here, but I think he's going in and out.
Oh, you know why, when you switch screens, we lost the audio, because the audio. It's okay, Scott, we now know how to mute. It's okay, Scott, we now know how to mute you. Did we do anything illegal while, while you couldn't respond?
Sure.
Okay, um, anybody have anything for Scott?
No.
Okay. Um. Did you need time, Steve? For Thursday? Okay. All right, um. Any questions on the upcoming council agenda items? Okay. Um, with that said, I think we are done.
I make a motion adjourned.
Welcome by Kathy. Second by Greg, all in favor? Hi.
Well, somebody had to take over for Floyd. Floyd was.